Together, I want to ask if you would, Councilwoman Jackson, be so kind to give us a divine blessing.
I'm gonna take the lead from Councilwoman Thomas and ask that we are all going with the Lord's Prayer.
Yeah.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. And forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever and ever.
Amen.
Amen.
Okay. Guess whatever you would like to start with, um, begin too?
Mr. President, I'm gonna lead to you. Now, you lead in that area, you know, I see it, I think we should begin at page one. Um, but you may want to get what was saved or others that you didn't miss here. I just don't want to miss a department as we're going through things. So I think we start with the first and go to the last here, but there may be a better one.
Okay.
I know the time has passed when you miss your department. Alright, that's page four in the 2019 budget, so the mayor's on.
I'm sorry, I said we're gonna go, we're gonna start at page one and go through the entire budget. Is that what we have?
We'll start with the first department.
So we don't have recommendations, we don't have priorities or anything like, we don't have a priority?
You could suggest that if you.
That could just be, how do you change?
This is just, you've done this.
Yeah.
So I thought this meeting was going to be done for this and noted changes that need to be done. I'm not prepared to go back through that, I've seen it in the entire process. So what do we do for that now?
Mr. President, what I was looking at was that we make the changes in every department and give them to our treasurer. Every department that we look at, she would then take the opportunity to go back and prior to our next meeting, she can run those numbers where we are, or we're over, or we're under, where we are, where we can have different allocations. It's put more funding where we choose, if we're saving it at one department where it would put more funding in another. But we can do this however you all choose.
Did we, did I say at the last question?
She didn't, she got, she taking notes besides the three or four that we have, we'll go in and give them to us.
I think you took some of the.
Okay. You guys seen the buildings?
Cause I know one thing, I think it was buildings out.
Every, every committee was gave a.
Recommendation?
Yes.
I, I had a committee.
But she never could get her people.
Yeah, right.
She was the only one. You were gonna meet that Monday, but I guess that didn't happen either, did it?
No.
She's the only one.
Right, so did we have?
Any recommendations?
On the first page?
Councilwoman?
Yeah, there were recommendations out of, uh, there were recommendations out of public buildings and, um, you know, I'll run to the car and get that notebook. I got the whole notebook with all the recommendations in it. We did this, um, last year, we took recommendations, gave them to the treasurer. She put them in and then she let us look to see what those recommendations look like. When she brought them back, then we had a visual on what they look like and that we could get those to her. Uh, since everyone except for Councilwoman Youngblood has had the opportunity to meet with their perspective. Um, the partners, and, but I know that she has recommendations as well.
The administrative department, me.
Yeah.
Who is that?
Carl.
No, they, they were, she was up here.
That was the me, so some youth program hadn't been discussed and things of, things of that sort.
What would you have met with for children?
Right, that's why.
Yes, I don't, I don't meet with anybody for education.
Right.
I just make recommendations. Yeah, so some of us don't do it like that. So we, um, we got to everyone except for everyone who watched that they had recommendations except Youngblood. And so why don't we go ahead and let her give her, her, her recommendations tonight?
Okay. My recommendation said, I don't have my graphic I've written already with me. It will take me just a second if y'all will let me look just a minute. My recommendations are not going to be that drastic. I know that there were some recommendations from the mayor that were real drastic, but there has not been any kind of meeting in the minds, um, with that. But, but there's, there's, there's just any, any hovering thing that just does not. But I, I do need just a few minutes to find that and get, I, I, I do know, um, what's gonna need to say.
Mayor X, um, Mr. President, Madam President, seeing this go where the first page, she needs to go times, it's the mayor's budget, I don't know administrator or someone, um, may, may, may concern his budget. But if we decide that there are no recommendations in that department, we can go ahead and move to the next while she's doing that. Are there any American recommendations?
He came before us.
He did.
He came before and told us what he wanted for his department. He named the.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, Mr. Wayne, go ahead.
I was just gonna make a suggestion, a recommendation that, um, if, if you would compile everything like Councilwoman Benjamin suggested. Um, and I think it worked, it was easier.
That's why I referred you last year, I think it was last year.
If one of, yeah, last year.
From all that.
Yeah, and y'all, you two worked together, but you took, you compiled this from each council member, what recommended changes were, and then you also heard, you took the, what you heard from the departments, took that into consideration, y'all compiled a list, and then we started tweaking, making the changes and see how that, what budgetary effect it had and counted, and then we went back and made necessary changes to come to a balance.
And that's, and that's what I'm asking this time, because when we did that last time, we met over in the, uh, the, um, front morning center. We wrote them down and I sent them to you, we were able to get them typed up, get them to you, and by the next day you were saying to go over the rest of them. So that's all I'm asking is what changes are we making? I write them down.
And then we can come back to.
Right, she can get them to you.
I'll, every, I've inputted all the things, because there are some Blue Cross Blue Shield numbers that have changed, so I need to add my portion in as well. And then we can come back and took, again, and have a full meeting to discuss what change, if anything, in each one.
Cause I know with that assurance that followed on Councilwoman Jackson, that $200 for the five files. I don't think that was what it was.
I'm not.
I know it wasn't.
Even with Councilwoman Youngblood now being president, Henry did make a presentation to this body. And, um, what, uh, I think we call per se, what was this recommendation by the Councilwoman Benjamin?
She wrote them down.
What, what recommendation did, did you make, Councilwoman?
I made a recommendation that all, uh, funds be put in an appropriate account. Uh, so when, uh, we need to know with our city buildings, we have ten city buildings, and you know, there's a lot of things that need to be done. And for the past three years, uh, been following, you know, uh, repairs, what needs to be done. There's some things haven't been done. And I think that if, uh, we start out, uh, knowing that the needed, that really needs to be done and know how the money is spent according to the repairs and.
I'm asking, was the city, the Turbine Center as one of the city buildings?
Nah, I, I thought it was, that's why I wanted to know was the Turbine Center one of the, I had included it in there. And, uh, somebody says that, uh, it's, it's not ours, is it?
I thought it was.
They say.
I think it's a church effort, it's a church effort.
It's a little break.
The city building, it's under, it's under the God issue of the.
That's a part.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
It's a lease of some, okay.
We take, don't we take care of the maintenance, cause when the air conditioner went down, we came before.
No, we, we took, um, well, there's.
And it was flooding.
Right now, so there is the top portion that we manage, and I think we also pay for, um, cleaning of the Turbine Center.
So that's included in, in, in your program? Yeah, and, and this is why it's very important I read that issue, because I've, uh, been following up. And I see, you know, our, our buildings, we need to, uh, some things, some major things need to get taken care of. And I think if we start doing that, knowing what, what is getting repaired and how it is costing us to get these things done.
What pages you're giving, Marv?
Also, I was gonna ask you too.
Fifty dollars for the cost of.
Miss Wayne.
The cost for the cost of.
No, for the, yeah. Yeah, fifty dollars, revenue, yeah. Fifty dollars for the board for every.
For that one, you have fifty. Say what was that?
Yes, revenue.
Yes, go ahead.
That's a projection, I know, a projection.
Um, for the point you just made, the statement, you said for all of the city buildings.
Nah, nah, I just asked about it, that was one of the requests that I.
Okay.
It would, it would increase the revenue, it wouldn't have an effort.
Yes, that's what I'm saying. I wanted to ask you, Ms. Wayne, one question.
I know what, that's how loud it is. Go ahead, go ahead.
Ms. Wayne, I need to ask you a question. It's the, I, I, you know, I'm getting ready to do a contract, uh, the contract deal for the, the Welcome Center. To be, you know, we voted to reopen it. And I want to know, uh, I have a look at it, is there, uh, salary in here for, that we can do the contract to pay them out of here, out of the what, to bring the bodies back in for the, for the Welcome Center?
So are you asking like, so we had part-time employees that were on payroll.
Mm-hmm.
Are you interested in reallocating that, those?
Yes, I wanna reallocate.
Temporarily until we restore them back into, to.
Yeah, cause we want to.
And I need to have a token put into the, to the contract, uh, how much, you know? So, so I guess essentially in the, in, if you're doing it, are you trying to do that now?
Yes, cause we voted on it, we wanna get the, uh, Welcome Center opened up, cause, uh, I'm trying to find out for Cheryl, how many buses comes in during the day, but they have to be scheduled through the chamber contract.
So my recommendation would be to temporarily move from the salary line item to a consult contract, um, line item. Contract employee, contract consultant line item until the employees are brought back.
Okay.
And then I guess you probably would allow them to go through that.
Councilwoman Youngblood.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Councilwoman Thomas, do those salaries come through public buildings or do those come through community development? I was under the impression that they work under community development, so.
They can come in.
That's what I thought, but, uh.
Oh, they come through him?
They come through community development.
That's what I thought, is that true, Ms. Wayne?
That's right.
So, so it's in his, uh, so it's.
It's a part of his salaries, yes. Their current, the, the employees were paid under, under the community development, flat payment development department.
Okay, I'll get with you, uh, Susan and, and I see where I can go with that.
Alright, I am, I'm gonna have, I'm gonna have, I'm gonna roll out real quickly.
Yes, ma'am.
Roughly the contract.
Yes, ma'am, can you?
And, and, um, yeah, I'm just gonna do a ballpark figure right here for the sake of, of recommendations.
Yeah, we have to bring that, we can use Mrs. Uh, um.
Ola.
Ms. Ola.
And then Terry, who used to work there, and then Ms. Dillard.
Uh-huh. And we had another lady issue.
Warren on the weekend, she works during the weekend, she would love to work on the weekend. And I would like, we need somebody on the weekend.
Okay, but will you work that up for me, cause we need to get on that right way. But that's, I see a lot of us.
I will, yes, we're missing, we're missing in the.
We need money.
We can do that, the holidays, we would rack up.
Councilman, do you have the recommendations for building the complete recommendation? I know she said that she wants the, the funds put in unappropriated, but which ones?
Uh, for, uh.
Maintenance. Eighty-five thousand, uh-huh, the eighty-five thousand, she wanted, um, so the total in my notes that I took was eighty-five thousand into unappropriated ceramics to return under the public buildings. Art camp, uh, art camp too, and fuel for the director being, um, deleted.
Yes.
Um, let me ask.
Director, what the?
Yeah, because she doesn't have a car anymore.
They said you, the mayor said that she need, she need gas, that gas money for her car.
Oh, yeah, that was, that was Councilman, uh, um, Shaw's recommendation.
To remove her.
Uh, to. To give her gas money.
Uh, she should have, right, right.
She should have.
The, the car was removed, the, the car was removed, but she.
She said.
And Councilman Shaw said, um, she should have fuel for, um, the director should have fuel. Eighty-five thousand unappropriated came from Councilwoman Thomas. And to return ceramics back to public buildings.
Are, are, are we paying for fuel, like using a fuel card, or are we gonna pay for mileage? So she have to keep her mileage law.
That was just a recommendation, we didn't discuss.
We need to have a regular mileage law.
Yeah, cause the mileage will be, uh, currently we doing fifty-five.
That's the easier to calculate.
But we need to, we don't go back.
You gotta go back.
About fifty-eight.
You gotta.
Move it up to fifty-eight. I think currently.
We're adding to fifty-eight?
That's what the state give, currently we, we're paying fifty-five. And in the past, we have always gone up with the state for mileage.
So we think it's already.
Cause I, I, they still maybe fifty-six, I don't imagine.
Last, last year.
They went up that year to fifty-eight?
Fifty-eight?
I'm, I'm, I'm paying you for mileage, this, for this trip, yeah, I'll let you do it.
Uh-huh. We got an outdated form.
Yeah, we have outdated, yeah. I pulled it up there.
Do you need to give her a lock?
It costs that fifty-eight cents.
Just give a hundred dollars a lock.
Flat rate.
A hundred a month?
Yeah.
So it's twelve thousand?
Yeah.
Cause you could go more than that if you keep mine.
Yeah, that's, that's, you have, that's, it will be several.
A hundred dollars a month for gas?
Why you say? Fuel a mileage, yeah, or is she going to, you don't need no.
She don't want that.
Is she going to get the buildings, we should be traveling.
Yeah.
And where?
They're ready for having a pool. They're not serving a green.
I thought you were coming out cheaper, just like say you can.
But, but it just depends on the number of.
Trips back and forth.
Events that's being carried.
A hundred dollars.
You said she's gotta cover all the events too, at night.
And sometimes have to come back, calls up as well.
And a lot will be several.
Yeah.
Two, two miles a night.
Fifty dollars pay you.
Two dollars a night.
Was she trying to pay you fifty-six, was it fifty dollars a week?
Fifty, yeah.
It's not a hundred nights in.
That's good.
Fifty dollars a week?
Go, let's go.
Fifty, more like.
Fifty, fifty.
That's still a hundred.
Yeah, it's still a hundred.
I was thinking fifty a month, but okay. Um, are we, I wanna look at the coordinator and staff, are we keeping all those members there? Well, did, did you have any recommendations in there?
Well, the recommendation was to, after.
She did, Ms., Ms. Davis had a recommendation of, uh, two, um, custodians. She said she needed those two custodians. Y'all forgive me, cause my pages are a little faded. She had a recommendation for, uh.
I've been buying still.
Water, water damage, uh, two custodians, she read, she said that she would need to carry out what we were asking. Councilwoman Thomas was, was asking, um, to go, to go backwards to, uh, to staff members and, and set up and break down and all those things. And she said, um, she needed, Ms. Davis said she needed two custodians.
Okay, and how many staff members she need to take the, um, events to, to make sure that they were on the move?
One, at one rate, she would need two, and then to go fully back, she said four.
How's she get one? I know what she, what she said she needed, um, I can't, you just mean, I can't see that they leave them in staffing, because half of the time, don't nobody be there, but, uh.
Ms. Stephanie.
Stephanie, and half the time, Ms. Davis is not even there. She's most likely to be at home all the time to, like in the evening for the come up or open up, or either for event.
Well, that's, that's what she was explaining, that she needed, um, four staff people. If, if they were gonna go back to what you proposed, the original contract, um, play, putting everything back like it was. She said she need, uh, people to cover these events, uh, to set up, to break down, and to clean. Uh, and I think in that capacity, I'm, I'm not gonna say, I'm just gonna read the notes, that's what she said.
So what with the custodians, would they be part of this?
Yes.
Would they be part of?
She said that before, um, Councilwoman's recommendation.
So would they be part of overseeing?
Custodians before that.
Would they be part of, you know, the setup overseeing?
The number four, the number two is that she needs two custodians, period.
Yes.
So she went up to the number four after she heard her recommendations, Councilwoman Thomas's recommendation. The number two needs to turn into the number four.
So she needs six people in that department?
No, the number two turned to the number four.
No, saying two, uh.
Oh, you're talking about the two that are already there, right? Yeah, additionals, uh-huh, yeah, four additionals.
But she won't need, uh.
And I, and these people are not, I, and I, these are not full-time people.
No, they're, they're part-time people, because they're not, they're not gonna be at, at the work all the time. They'll, they come in.
Custodians of four, and so we need four part-time custodians?
No.
Or two full-time, two part-time?
The other two people would be called, she called the two custodians, custodians, cause she was giving her recommendations.
Yes, and eleven of thirty.
And once Councilwoman gave her, uh, recommendation that she would like to go back to the original, then she said, well, then I, I would need four staff, um, four staff members and staffs too.
And now if, 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 if President Wood is saying add fifty dollars all the way across the board to every, everything that we, uh, we, that we running, so we need to, uh, she would need, uh, if we adding, uh, fifty dollars across the board to every, every event, the building that we are leasing?
Uh, and what, what do we have fifty dollars for? Are we gonna?
Building.
Okay, are, are we gonna fix these buildings?
I think, and until we get them in condition, we got dirty floors and torn up.
It take months, we gotta wait, so we gotta get this worked on. The whole building, City Hall need to be cleaned, we got ten buildings, and God knows how Welcome Center look now since it's been closed almost.
It's a joke.
Can we clean up and then?
Well, I, I think that we should clean.
Clean up first.
Put new carpet down and then revisit the increase, cause I don't, if I could pay three hundred dollars now for a filthy building, I don't wanna pay three fifty for a filthy building. I mean, I paid three fifty for a clean and expected new painted building.
I would ask that everybody visit these buildings, they're filthy.
They nasty.
I mean, I was embarrassed to have people to come from all over the state into the Evans building when we had our.
And toilets.
You know, I tried to warn you that the carpet was burned.
And, and my.
We were fired.
And before.
Councilwoman, I'm sorry, I was finishing.
Okay.
That carpet is burned with actual fire. When somebody said there was carpet burn, I thought somebody had, had drugged some, um, some chairs across the carpet and it was burned. The carpet was burned with fire, with actual fire, so.
And it's large.
Can we clean up, can we clean up and then go up?
Yeah, that's, that's.
Yeah, like burning the fire, melted.
Right.
Did, did they not go in there and span that?
Yeah, it should have been reported for the insurance company.
I think it was filed on the insurance, but I didn't look at that.
Should have been filed now, it shouldn't have been filed.
Ms. Wayne been looking for ever, it was, it was not, it was not. But let me suggest this, that we clean, and this is just a suggestion, that we clean up before we go up.
Yeah.
Um, and that floor, that carpet, that, that floor maybe, that floor, the Evans building maybe needs to be like a floor in Convention Center. Yes, get rid of the carpet and put some tile. It's just.
I mean, you go to the, look, I, I, I put it in the article whether they liked it or not in my editorial. If you go around the run of Convention Center, the, the, um.
The shutters.
The shutters, I'm falling apart. I mean, I don't wanna go in, renting a building for, for more and you've done less for it in the last year, but you want me to pay, pay more to receive it, I, I just.
President Wood.
Okay.
Uh, with the amount, so the total amount that we were having here now, will it just be eighty-five thousand?
That's what I have as a recommendation, that's what I'm asking.
But I'm saying, that's all that she gets for the ten.
Eighty-five thousand, like one building.
That's what I'm saying, so the eighty-five, she has ten buildings, it's ten buildings. And, and, and out of the, the worst ones that are in shape is the, uh, Convention Building and the George Evans Building and, uh, City Hall, that's three. City Hall is gonna require a makeover. And, uh, God knows what, we don't know what's going on in the Welcome, Welcome Center when they open the door. And, uh.
What, um, I, Councilwoman, if you don't mind, I'd like to make a recommendation that we take one of these salaries out and put it toward building maintenance, that'll give you several thousand.
Well, the salary, which salary are you trying to recommend to take out of public building?
While she looking for that, I have a question. So the, the purpose last time was, um, moving eighty-five thousand to unappropriated for any area, not just this department, was to see how much is exactly needed. Ma'am, Treasurer, okay, so we're talking about increases or whatever, what was used? What was you, and I know I'm asking you something off the top of my head.
Well, I know, but what I, Councilwoman Jackson, what, what was?
Dallas Air for units being repaired or. Mostly, um, it was, it was being mostly for like Dallas Air, air conditioning repair. It was more so to fix problems, like Smith and Bill, they would probably pay for stuff like this. So a lot of that was already reimbursed with the insurance, but that was essentially, really wasn't any maintenance.
It was never done.
Right, it, there was really any preventative maintenance done this year.
And that's what I'm saying, our idea for putting funds in unappropriated was to help us gauge where we are now.
Yeah.
Uh, when we did this, and it, it sounds like we didn't spend much.
And if you recall during the last time, I said we spent about sixty-nine thousand dollars.
Or something like that?
But this is eight thirty-one, that was as of six thirty-one, because you know they had to go back in and do.
Right.
Those over, so let me give you as of eight thirty-one what we actually spent, um, building inspector.
Can we, can we, can we, uh?
So we actually spent fifteen thousand seven ninety-nine twenty-five. And then I would, would like to know if we spent those last two months, um, because it went up to, um, thirty-one thousand dollars.
Total? From fifteen to thirty-one?
Yeah, we, we came in at, um, nine thousand, and then we went up to fifteen and it ended at thirty-one to, to nine seventeen on August thirty-first, as of August thirty-first. So July and August, we used a lot of money.
Yeah.
But I don't recall seeing anything done, I was in there September and it wasn't done to the Evans. Where, where did you?
Yeah, I have the Smith and Bill in repair.
Uh, we had that repaired in, uh, it was sometime in May, it was, it was warm.
So if we paid it, it was likely.
It was paid in July.
June or July, though, those are the costs, that's what I'm saying, that those are the costs that mostly was incurred.
What, can I say something? All the cost that was done at the Smith and Bill, it came from.
Insurance and damage.
Insurance.
But when the expenses are hitting, the general fund, it's hitting on the, the public buildings. So you're gonna see that, it's not gonna be a wash, it's gonna be those expenses coming out of that line item for the building.
Cause just like she gave you a ten thousand dollar check, yeah, they, they, they turned it over to.
For the revenue. Yeah, it doesn't wash out, we put it, we increased the appropriations to make it available for them to spend, but it goes in the revenue account.
Oh, okay, then just like the other money that, uh.
No matter, no matter what revenue it was in, we, we put it in the revenue account for public buildings. If it's insurance reimbursement goes in there. So we increased the line item, like y'all may have eighty-five thousand dollars, um, allotted for, budgeted for the year. So we received a twenty thousand dollar insurance, uh, reimbursement, we increased to eighty-five thousand, then it becomes one oh five available to spend. So it will not affect, it, it will not affect their budgeted line item for the year. It won't reduce the amount that they have available for the year.
It, it appears, and you can tell me, it said adopt the budget eighty-five, amended ninety-two fifty. Um, amended budget seventy-five seven fifty. Current month transaction six thousand two eighty-one. Year-to-date, the commerce is twenty-eight zero thirty-three. Year-to-date transactions fifteen seven nine nine two five. Year-to-budget, year-to-pay transaction thirty-one nine seventeen. Um, amount used out of the budget, allowed amount was fifty-eight percent of it. So we didn't use a hundred percent of the money, but as you stated, they were for reactive things, not proactive things. There was no maintenance, there was fixing things.
No, no preventative maintenance, that was basically repair, like what got stolen from, or what got, what was burned. Dallas Academy, you gotta take that into consideration, have to take in this Miller and Bill, and all those expenses go, fall on the public.
Well, we got, you, you received checks, we know that.
Right.
We know you, we have received a check, that's why we requested, as I requested, that we move forward with, cause the money bit, it's sitting there, so the repair, once you get all that done, we got that.
My, my thought in looking at two people in the office over there is one person could actually be in the office over here in the clerk's office, that, they could still, when someone called, answer phone and put it on the events book. It doesn't, they, do they have to be in one location to write down an event? And they could help, they could be a help to that, and so that's why I was just trying to do multi-use.
Can't do that.
Utilize those funds.
You can't do that.
You can't?
No, let me explain to you. No, let me explain to you.
Okay, explain to you.
See, I, I wa- I'm a bit older, I know how they operate. See, during the daytime, they have, the, the movie theater will be open for the senior citizen, the library...
You couldn't do that.
There, there, if, if...
I'm just asking.
I'm telling you now.
Okay.
Uh, before, when you, when you start talking, I already have looked into this, I see how they do their daily day routine operating. Stephanie is there during the day, she has to answer the phones, and, uh, like, when these different libraries or, or they bring the kids to the movies, there is something always going on there. So, Stephanie is, they say Stephanie is the body. And then, like, when a business meeting or somebody got to have a business meeting, Ms., Ms. Davis is the one have to go and...
So, you're saying it's absolutely necessary to have seventy-five thousand dollars in personnel?
I didn't say seventy-five thousand, that you, unless you're talking about they, you're supposed to be talking about they salary. You're talking about they salary.
You know, I'm saying two bodies.
Yeah, but I ain't, I, I don't know if somebody make that kind of money, it's the director.
I'm saying, we got, it, it's proposed that they got a guest coordinator for thirty thousand and building, um, facilities manager at forty-five thousand. I'm hoping that that's the director, um, because if, we gotta pay the director something else, then we got two custodians at twenty and a building maintenance person at thirty-three. So, I'm saying, is it efficient?
You got to have, you got to have the two bodies in there.
So, you gotta...
Because you got, I'm telling you, you got day-to-day operation going on, then you got business, events that are going on in city, building, building. So, you gotta have two people, that's why Ms. Davis don't never be there full-time, Stephanie be there all the time. It's certain times that Ms. Davis come in, you know, they work the books, you know how you work the books on different, that's what, I've been, that's how I've been monitoring how they've been doing.
Okay, hold on, Councilwoman, uh, well, let me first, I apologize, I missed the word, but Councilwoman Benjamin, with your notes, can you just give them to Ms. Wade?
I can.
Okay, you have anything else, Councilwoman Youngblood, you say you...
Oh, I'm, I'm, I'm about to have, if, if y'all wanna hear about community development.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, I'm writing this down.
Um, do you need to take notes or did you write it down where I can...
I've, I've written that, I've, I don't know if you can read it yet, but I can have it right here. Okay.
I can record.
I have, um, if you've got like where it says FY twenty-nine, amended adopted budget, okay. Um, Director Stephanie, I, I'll just tell you the changes I've made, where it says grant application preparation. What is it that we approved the amount of the grant application for the, the person from, was that seventy-five?
Sixty.
Pardon?
Sixty.
It was sixty, okay, who was that?
We allocated sixty.
We allocated sixty, so I'm, should I change that to sixty?
Change.
Because we think that person's gonna come and help us do a lot of good stuff. All right, I changed that. Okay, and look down on special projects.
Look at this.
Look at this one.
Oh, I'm sorry, sugar, that is seven, page seven of thirty-eight, page seven of thirty-eight. So, on grant application preparation, let's say sixty thousand for that. Then we have already voted to allocate for that. Um, all right, uh-huh, no, grant preparation. Now, we're down to, okay, special projects. Um, I have changed that figure to a hundred and sixty-five thousand from just sixty-five thousand, to put one hundred thousand to start a municipal improvement act revolving fund in there. And let me explain why this is very important, we have needed this as long as I have been on the council. Uh, and for y'all, who, for those who aren't familiar with the Municipal Improvement Act, um, we have not been able to enforce that, we've invoked it a couple of times, but we have not been able to put any teeth into it, because we have had no money allocated for it. The Municipal Improvement Act allows the city to save, for instance, we, uh, to save the O Y across the street over there, the, at least the facade. And I'm hopeful that something will soon be, be done with that, uh, I, I won't go into, uh, get bogged down in that like mayhem, please be proud of me for not, because it would be real easy to, the way I go off on tangents, but anyway. Um, in order to save that and keep it from getting torn down, because people were really afraid it would fall, but they did show it up. Anyway, we invoked the Municipal Improvement Act, and that's where to, to, you can do it really for anything, but it's typically for historic buildings and preservation, it's a tool that we use. And the city invokes the Municipal Improvement Act, and it gives notice to the landowner to, in other words, ship up or ship out, use it or lose it, fix it or nix it, whatever you wanna say. And we have a lot of property, and Councilwoman Jackson, in your ward, where you have five wards in one, you know, and really, I feel sorry for anybody who has ward three, because you do have to like five wards in one. You've got the Ice House District, all distinctive places, that, you know, distinctive landmarks. You've got the Ice House District, you've got the Riverview, you've got Old Town, you've got Cigar, yeah, you've got it all. And every one of them could have all this, but what I'm looking, the, the thing that I'm looking at from an economic development, and something that, that would really help propel Selma forward is, um, you know, how, where I've been coming to y'all and saying, can we please do this? Can we please, and asking to extend the opportunity zone, and asking to, and that, like on Riverview, over in your ward, um, there are, it's, it's, it's kind of a shame, but there's, there's a lot of opportunity there too. And along with there's some of those apartments on there on Arsenal Place, that could really have some stuff done with them. What's happened is you've had people pick them up real cheap, some of them, those things even for just the taxes and stuff, and they just hold them. You've got trees growing out of some houses and blah, 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 anyway. One of the things that we need to do is to invoke the Municipal Improvement Act and tell these folks, you gonna have, you got, you know, give them notice, we're gonna do that, and just set aside certain areas we're gonna focus on and have, you know, movements or whatever, and do that. So, we're going to have to be able to do that if we're going to be able to make meaningful efforts and affect meaningful changes, and especially with that to landlords, when people aren't attending to, all right, so I think y'all get the picture, I think I can quit preaching about it.
Oh, I know, actually.
Yes.
So, the proposed budget, uh, is one fifty-eight?
All right, wait a minute, I'm not finished, I'm not finished with it.
Oh, I'm sorry, that line, that...
Did you ask something about the Municipal Improvement Act?
I wanna ask about this special project line item that you said increased to one sixty.
Yeah.
Is it one sixty plus to one fifty-eight, or you said...
No, just increase it to one sixty-five.
So...
Just add the a hundred thousand for the Municipal Improvement Act, let me explain how that works.
I, I know how that works, but I wanted to ask about these, are we not funding? Are you not looking at the empathy, are you saying we're slicing the, the, uh, proposed maintenance?
No, not at all, those things up there at the top are still saying, I'm just asking for a hundred thousand to start a revolving fund for the Municipal Improvement Act fund, because what happens when people start to, um, when people, you know, when we have to expend money to do things, and then people start paying it back, or else they don't pay it back. But then when we, if we have to get the property, convert it to us or sell it to pay things off, it will eventually come back and it will go back into that fund to sustain it. It becomes self-sustaining.
Yes, ma'am, I understand that, but I, I guess my question is, you said, look at special projects, you wanna increase to sixty-five thousand to a hundred and sixty-five thousand. But I'm looking at, you're looking at sixty-five based on twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, I'm looking at the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty proposed budget of one hundred and fifty-eight thousand. You say you're not asking to increase that, but you want to continue with that.
Okay, well, I did, okay, I just have the, no, I don't wanna scrap that other stuff.
So, you're asking to increase it one fifty-eight plus one sixty?
Yes, I didn't know, I didn't wanna, I just had the, um...
So, the total budget will be three fifty-one, two fifty-one?
Yeah, yes. And also, um, down there, see, I needed to add sixty thousand for contract labor for a year to man the Welcome Center. But now that's going to become, that's going to pay for itself too, because we're going to be selling things, they're going to, to, that'll pay for itself. You know, we sell things out of the Welcome Center, and, and given the opportunity, we could bring in a lot more money, we could bring in a lot of profit from the Welcome Center.
Yes.
I just wanted to ask, do we have an idea prior to this layoff of what the Welcome Center collected in a year's time? Do we have, do we know how much they were able to?
Well, it was, it, that is a loaded question, and I tell you why I say that, because they were real stifled as to what they were allowed to do. There were a lot of other things, pardon?
And the merchandise that it was...
Exactly, they wanted to do a lot more, there were a lot more requests for things, but that, they, it was shut down. I mean, they were shut out of the ability to do that.
So, this, this, are you saying, in this administration or even before this administration, we never really funded any money?
This administration particularly.
So, this administration, so tell me, can, I guess I'm just trying to...
I understand, yeah, you're trying to get a grip on it, uh-huh.
I'm trying to understand, you said if they're really paying for themselves, I wanna see where's evident in the past that they've made...
Well, we didn't, we did not have a building before.
But we got it in the last administration, correct?
Well, no, we didn't, we didn't have the building ready, it just got ready, we were ready to go it, and then it was just like...
Shut up.
Yeah.
Okay.
But the opportunities are myriad.
Okay, okay. So, we propose that we can make?
Yes.
I, I see the treasurer shaking her head, do, do you know how much, um, have they...
No, I don't know how.
How much we could possibly make if it was...
I want a projection.
I, I, no, I don't know how much, but I think based on the cost of merchandise, if we, um, get it and it's not dated like a T-shirt with, um, nineteen ninety-nine or something, that it can move, and as she said before, um, we had to have a relocation twice, I mean, during the Evans administration, it, it closed down on one location, then it had to be fixed up again, and then even at the beginning of this administration, some, some, um, repairs had to be done. It was never fully operational like it should have been, but you can judge from the tourists that come here, the many buses, if the city had a open, a location that was open during reasonable hours and right, correct staff and, and the right merchandise, we definitely could make some money.
And I can see just the merchandise with the golf polo shirts.
Right.
When they put them in, they were selling...
People love the Selma shirts, so I know, I bought.
They sold that, yeah.
Well, yeah, when I, when I would go to the Delta things and would take some shirts as a prize or something, everybody would say, if I give you the money, will you send me one? I mean, people love the Selma shirts.
And toward the tail end, it seemed like to me the merchandise became better, you know. Go ahead, Councilwoman Youngblood.
Okay, um, and that's really, that's really all, I don't know why I've got that, I didn't have that other thing, I just didn't have all the complete stuff on here. So, it's each, okay, it's the two fifteen, I'll say, so, yes, I wanted to essentially add a hundred thousand...
To the one fifty-eight.
Yeah, to the one fifty-eight.
One fifty-eight.
Um, and the Municipal Improvement Act will...
One hundred.
Yeah, a hundred thousand, and it'll like always be there, you know, I mean, I mean, it'll go down some, but it will be, as I said, self-sustaining. We'll probably even make some money out of that too, it's big master, because that is, the place that I wanna start is in opportunity zone.
Um, Councilwoman, may I ask one question, though, on page four of thirty, at the Welcome Center, we have three tenants, are you looking at those contracted salaries? Are you looking to raise them, change them, alter them in any way, or are you looking at, um, increase them by using two of those salaries, um, and combining the last one for thirty, increase those salaries, how, how are you doing that? It's on page four of thirty.
Four of what?
Four of thirty in the back.
You asking her about employee salary?
The, the contract position.
Oh, you're asking, I'm so sorry, you're asking me, I thought you were talking about Evans, okay, I'm sorry.
About the contract.
Would you say that again, because I thought you were talking about...
No, you said, of course you want those people to come back in the Welcome Center.
Yes.
And so I looked at the Welcome Center, and we have three positions in the budget for the Welcome Center.
Yes.
And I was asking, do you plan to use those three positions that we already got contracted, or are you looking to increase the contract?
Let me, let me explain, let me explain, let me explain what I did. Because it doesn't have benefits, you don't have to do FICA and social security and all that stuff, and don't have insurance, that is huge.
Right.
So, that's a big savings, but what, what I do is I have two kind of part-time, full-time people. It really takes, unless there's a really big weekend, and I'm, just in this, this is a, uh, uh, this is a real liberal estimate, uh, 'cause we're planning, I would rather overshoot than undershoot. But, um, when you're talking about budgeted things, but what, what I had planned for is to have generally, um, a salesperson, and then, or somebody to do sales, who is there and knows where, what's going on, and then, for part of the time when there may be a busy time, somebody to be like a greeter, kind of hostess, to, because people love that.
Right, yes.
They, one of the things that they really like about us, and you know, one of our, one of our little sayings is, and yeah, our strengths is, that one of the little sayings is, um, hi- historic places and social roses, and people, we, we're history meets hospitality, and people really love that about us. And so, um, having that, so a, and just kind of a part-time, because it is a place where older folks like to be there and work, so...
You got those contract amount, those...
Yeah, uh-huh, I've got for, for the, um, two kind of, I will say full-time, part-time sort of, ten dollars an hour. And then like for a kind of part-time person, like a just older, just to be there, it's like eight dollars an hour. And then for the weekend, the person who would be in, be responsible for the ordering, that has always done like the ordering and all that stuff, and the inventory and things like that, on the weekends, coming on Saturdays and on Sundays, that is a big thing, coming in Saturdays and Sundays, because we have a lot of traffic, folks that come in Saturdays and Sundays. Be a, um, be a, like twelve fifty an hour on Saturday, and then fifteen dollars an hour on Sunday.
And is it gonna be open in the park?
Yeah, it's gonna be open, uh-huh. Yeah, on the su- yeah, at the church time.
On the Bible.
Uh-huh, and then all day on, on Saturday.
So, twelve fifty on Saturday?
Yeah, when people are working on weekends.
And Sunday fifteen?
Yeah.
Okay, let me ask you this, um, so, when I count these four positions, are you saying three, did I miscount, or is it three or four? Is three in the budget?
Yeah, Henry Thompson recommended three in his budget, looking at the, at the, at the notes. And he said that, um, some would be part-time for a specific reason, and they're supposed to be already calculated, so, um, did you get your numbers, your calculation out of his number?
No, well, I didn't know this, because I had, uh-uh.
Okay, he did make a little report.
Oh, he did?
Well, I, I wasn't, I wasn't here, and I haven't had the opportunity to talk with him. Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna pass the note.
Well, I tell you what, I, Henry and I need to, Henry and I need to talk.
You need to go and see the missus, come and see him.
Mom, I, I've tried to do that.
You, you can't just go in there and talk to her?
I've tried to do that.
Ms. Wade, can you give me a head count, how many people make it seven twenty-five?
Okay.
A total of that.
Now, also, let me remind you, contract workers, when you, when you're, the seven twenty-five people, you know, add in the FICA and your insurance and their retirement and all that stuff, that banks it up a lot, I used to do the HR stuff.
Sixteen.
Yeah. Yeah.
About sixteen, even seven twenty-five, it's still, it's about sixteen, fifteen.
Fifteen, yeah, anyway.
Yep. Any other?
And I, I, yeah, I don't know what these thugs, what the, I don't know what these three, three of these thugs were making when they were laid off.
It was seven, seven twenty-five. They were making, it was seven twenty-five, only number, it was seven.
Isn't it budget?
Yeah, I know one of them had been here like twenty something years.
Hasn't ever been the tourism coordinator, it's in there for thirty thousand.
Yeah, she was standing, I don't know what, yeah, she's.
Person you're talking to?
Yeah.
But they don't have it.
Um, the part-time people for, they, they gonna make it nine oh eight minimum.
Nine oh eight?
Mm-hmm.
For Nilla?
Yeah, for planning development, for the welcome center.
And you said seven twenty-five?
Exactly.
In the budget, you gotta make seven twenty-five.
Well, there you go.
And, and, and they're making nine hours.
Are you looking at?
She's got page four.
Yeah, we're looking at page.
Paybook, yeah, paybook.
We're looking at page four in the last budget.
You got them at seven twenty-five.
Seven, she don't have them.
I meant they, they gotta make seven twenty-five.
Yeah.
No. Here it is in the last year's budget, um, it's nine oh eight, you know, but that's what they proposed last year, I don't think we.
I, I was looking at the system of the.
Twenty nineteen, yeah.
But I, I, I'm pretty certain that they've been making nine oh eight.
Huh?
I, I think they've always made nine oh eight.
Well, how do they get this?
It's a resumption.
No, it was the public work, I, I'll check it and verify.
Yeah, it got over here on, on page four, it says, it's welcome center, seven twenty-five. Welcome center attended tourism, it's on page four, and then.
Now, whose budget is that?
Your, uh, this.
This is the proposed budget for this year.
The proposed one?
For, for, for the mayor or what, what was, what is actually?
Well, this is twenty nineteen proposed budget.
Okay, then, then.
Is this the one that came out of the mayor's office?
Yeah. Alright, yes, and then I asked, so, so that we have such limited time, and since I know I need to talk to Henry and find out about all this, and I can talk to Ms. Wade, find out what they actually were paid, so that we're not spinning our wheels up here talking about all this. We can move on to something else and I can go on and find out that all this stuff.
Cause most of the people that was minimal wage was cemetery, the people that made minimal wage were cemetery and public workers.
And they worked like dogs.
Mm-hmm, those, those were low wage.
Grass cutters, they made seven twenty-five.
They worked like dogs.
You remember that, Councilwoman?
That, that rate that nine oh eight came from that.
It's way.
She said, she think they've always been paying nine oh eight.
I, I've been looking at the system in the morning, verifying.
And our recommendations for this way? And our recommendations for this way?
Sixty-five.
Yeah, but six of those.
Okay.
Um, I, I work on the subject. What about, every, does there any, anything about public workers, Ms. LaShore, is that sure, are you chairman of?
Yeah, I was thinking today, since the council won't call a meeting, I need to tell the committee, get any public works, workers before us to find out what the problem is.
And this, this.
That was part of the.
Ms. LaShore, have you talked to any of the workers?
Well, I was gonna wait until, fill that dump with the mayor to see, uh, which way we need to go.
Yeah.
Right, yeah. So, I guess I'm gonna give you an outline of what. That being able to determine which way I'm going.
Yeah.
What was your question?
Have you personally talked with some of the workers?
No.
Alright, I'll get to talk with you after this, that's what I'm talking about.
I, I, I purposefully have a.
I'm just saying, I, I think I'm in here with something, I, something that rocks me out of my.
Are we, are we needing to mark this, is it necessary?
It's not.
I think, I think, I think it's, uh, Councilwoman, that's, just look down on the notes and everything.
You did, I have an answer.
Wait.
Okay. That man, I.
I've been looking for the appropriate.
This one, that man, I, I think.
That was the same, that this year, that's all the recommendations I have, and also you talked about that.
Administrator is not on him, everybody, they said they had a report, I took.
You got all my, that's what, that's what I'm talking about.